Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the May 4th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Kenai City Council to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening, and if you are able, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call it all.
Councilmember Winger?
Here.
Councilmember Naxted?
Here.
Mayor Gabriel?
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Here.
Councilmember Basden?
Here.
Councilmember Sonar?
Here.
Councilmember Petty?
Here.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council, before we get to agenda approval, I'd like to call your attention to a laydown you should have in front of you with requested additions to the packet action add to item G10, item new business discussion, item Zoom Analytics Report. This was requested by Councilmember Petty. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move for approval of the agenda with the add item G10.
Second.
Question or misconsent?
Thank you. unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection to agenda approval? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. I'm sorry.
Excuse me. I need to make a motion also, Mayor, if I could. I need to, I'd like to remove introduction ordinance 3287-2022 from the consent agenda and have it heard at its regular place on the agenda as item G6.
Okay. Yeah, and we'll get to that. Just is the very next item of business, Councilmember Basden, under consent agenda? Oh, is it under agenda? Oh, I thought it was under consent. Oh, okay. Okay, so we will pull the consent agenda, or item, could you state that item again, Councilmember Basden?
That is, I would like to remove the introduction ordinance 3287-2022 from the consent agenda and have it heard at its regular place on the agenda as item G6.
Thank you. Is there any other? Councilmember Petty?
Yes, Mayor Gabriel. I would like to take off the consent agenda, item A3, and have it heard at, I would like to remove it from the consent agenda and have it heard in the regular place on the agenda as item E2, please.
Was that E2 or E3?
Oh, two, three, three. I beg your pardon. It was a mistake.
Okay, E3. So you'd like to pull E3 off the consent agenda and heard in place of E3 on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, very good. With those amendments, is there any other objection to approval of the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved with those items pulled from the consent agenda. Next up, we have the consent agenda approval. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move for approval of the consent agenda with the two noted amendments. Request unanimous consent.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other council member that would like to amend the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda into the record, please?
Approval of the regular meeting minutes of April 20th, 2022, introduced by the city clerk. Approval of the special meeting minutes of April 25th, 2022, introduced by the city clerk. New business action approval, bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. New business action approval, non-objection to liquor license renewal for the upper deck, introduced by the city clerk. New business action approval, amending employee agreements between the city of Kenai and city manager Paul Ostrander and city clerk Michelle Sainer, introduced by Mayor Gabriel. New business action approval, amending and extending an employee agreement between the city of Kenai and city attorney Scott Bloom, introduced by Mayor Gabriel. New business ordinance number 3286-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund, police department, and accepting a grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation passed through the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and public facilities for traffic enforcement overtime expenditures, introduced by the administration, public caring on May 18th, 2022. And new business ordinance number 3288-2022, accepting and appropriating a scholarship from the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks for employee travel and training, introduced by the city clerk, public caring on May 18th, 2022. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to any item that is on the consent agenda, which was just read into the record by the clerk? Is there anybody online?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move to item B, scheduled public comments. In this evening, we have Valda Geller, Kenai Senior Connections, 2022 Meals on Wheels Event. Ms. Geller?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us here at Kenai. My name is Valda Geller, and I live at 1315 Fourth Avenue in Kenai, and I am president of the Senior Connection, Kenai Senior Connection. On behalf of the Senior Connection, we would like to say thank you for attending our March for Meals fundraiser. We raised $7,800 from the celebrity desserts at our pie auction. And right now, we are in the, we're still having some funds coming in by mail, and we are approximately over $35,000 that we had mailed received this year. That has been the biggest one, I think, we've ever had. This time, this has been the best time that we've ever had, as far as I can recall. We are already planning for our next March for Meals next year. On March the 31st, 2023, put that on your calendar. Our theme is going to be centered around the Kentucky Derby, so that should be a fun event. Tonight, we are here to present a check for $50,000 to the city council budget. This has been our annual contribution. We also want to thank the city for their help with the senior center budget. And later on, we have brought some what we call Mrs.'s cookies. If you've ever eaten one of Mrs.'s cookies, you'll understand what we're talking about. So, now, do we have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Geller? Councilmember Petty?
Oh, thank you, Ms. Geller, for bringing this report. It is so generous to have this $50,000 in our budget. Thank you so very much, and thank you to every individual who contributed, who planned, who came, and who enjoyed, and who are still contributing. It really helps our community and our senior citizens, and that is awesome. In your planning for your Kentucky Derby opportunity, have you, I'm sure that y'all have many creative ideas, but perhaps there could be a hat contest to encourage the opportunity of festivities.
One reason that we decided on something like this was when Brian mentioned the fact that the people was here, the ladies, a lot of them, was dressed up. So we thought, well, let's try something new and do something else for that. So keep that in mind. You've got almost a year to get ready.
Thank you.
And that seems like such a better theme than like NCAA basketball, March Madness, or, you know. So I like, I like where you're at there, Valda.
That's okay with you guys. We're not that, that group, are we?
Any further questions or comments of Ms. Geller? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Valda, for coming tonight. And you're absolutely tireless. You're always, you know, you're starting, hitting the ground running for next year already. And, and it was an awful lot of work, I'm sure, putting this all together. And there was a lot of details, a lot of people were doing things, and you were directing the show, and it was not unnoticed by me. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
And I'd like to, like to give you a little clap for the, for the $50,000.
Well, you know, personally, to me, this March for Meals fundraiser is a very important one. It is a lot of work. It's very tiring. We put several months and lots of overtime in it, but when it's over with, we can look back and think, this is what we have been done for our older people. Not that we're young anymore, but, you know, it's a blessing to me. So thank you all for coming this year.
Is there any other questions? Councilmember Winger or Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
No, thanks. I enjoy the, I enjoy what I'm hearing, and thank you.
Okay, very good. And I would just like to say, I had a great time, and I always do. That's one of my favorite events every year. And I usually have to wear glasses to read stuff, but I have no problem reading that number. So if we could, I'd actually take a minute, and maybe we can muster down in front of the dais and get a picture. Is that okay? And then take a moment to grab some of Mrs.'s cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council, before we get to agenda approval, I'd like to call your attention to a laydown you should have in front of you with requested additions to the packet action add to item G10, item new business discussion, item Zoom Analytics Report. This was requested by Councilmember Petty. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move for approval of the agenda with the two noted amendments. Request unanimous consent.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other council member that would like to amend the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda into the record, please?
Approval of the regular meeting minutes of April 20th, 2022, introduced by the city clerk. Approval of the special meeting minutes of April 25th, 2022, introduced by the city clerk. New business action approval, bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. New business action approval, non-objection to liquor license renewal for the upper deck, introduced by the city clerk. New business action approval, amending employee agreements between the city of Kenai and city manager Paul Ostrander and city clerk Michelle Sainer, introduced by Mayor Gabriel. New business action approval, amending and extending an employee agreement between the city of Kenai and city attorney Scott Bloom, introduced by Mayor Gabriel. New business ordinance number 3286-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund, police department, and accepting a grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation passed through the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and public facilities for traffic enforcement overtime expenditures, introduced by the administration, public caring on May 18th, 2022. And new business ordinance number 3288-2022, accepting and appropriating a scholarship from the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks for employee travel and training, introduced by the city clerk, public caring on May 18th, 2022. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to any item that is on the consent agenda, which was just read into the record by the clerk? Is there anybody online?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move to item B, scheduled public comments. In this evening, we have Valda Geller, Kenai Senior Connections, 2022 Meals on Wheels Event. Ms. Geller?
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us here at Kenai. My name is Valda Geller, and I live at 1315 Fourth Avenue in Kenai, and I am president of the Senior Connection, Kenai Senior Connection. On behalf of the Senior Connection, we would like to say thank you for attending our March for Meals fundraiser. We raised $7,800 from the celebrity desserts at our pie auction. And right now, we are in the, we're still having some funds coming in by mail, and we are approximately over $35,000 that we had mailed received this year. That has been the biggest one, I think, we've ever had. This time, this has been the best time that we've ever had, as, as far as I can recall. We are already planning for our next March for Meals next year. On March the 31st, 2023, put that on your calendar. Our theme is going to be centered around the Kentucky Derby, so that should be a fun event. Tonight, we are here to present a check for $50,000 to the city council budget. This has been our annual contribution. We also want to thank the city for their help with the senior center budget. And later on, we have brought some what we call Mrs.'s cookies. If you've ever eaten one of Mrs.'s cookies, you'll understand what we're talking about. So, now, do we have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Geller? Councilmember Petty?
Oh, thank you, Ms. Geller, for bringing this report. It is so generous to have this $50,000 in our budget. Thank you so very much, and thank you to every individual who contributed, who planned, who came, and who enjoyed, and who are still contributing. It really helps our community and our senior citizens, and that is awesome. In your planning for your Kentucky Derby opportunity, have you, I'm sure that y'all have many creative ideas, but perhaps there could be a hat contest to encourage the opportunity of festivities.
One reason that we decided on something like this was when Brian mentioned the fact that the people was here, the ladies, a lot of them, was dressed up. So we thought, well, let's try something new and do something else for that. So keep that in mind. You've got almost a year to get ready.
Thank you.
And that seems like such a better theme than like NCAA basketball, March Madness, or, you know. So I like, I like where you're at there, Valda.
That's okay with you guys. We're not that, that group, are we?
Any further questions or comments of Ms. Geller? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Valda, for coming tonight. And you're absolutely tireless. You're always, you know, you're starting, hitting the ground running for next year already. And, and it was an awful lot of work, I'm sure, putting this all together. And there was a lot of details, a lot of people were doing things, and you were directing the, the show, and, and it was not unnoticed by me. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
And I'd like to, like to give you a little clap for the, for the $50,000.
Well, you know, personally, to me, this March for Meals fundraiser is a very important one. It is a lot of work. It's very tiring. We put several months and lots of overtime in it, but when it's over with, we can look back and think, this is what we have been done for our older people. Not that we're young anymore, but, you know, it's a blessing to me. So thank you all for coming this year.
Is there any other questions? Councilmember Winger or Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
No, thanks. I enjoy the, I enjoy what I'm hearing, and thank you.
Okay, very good. And I would just like to say, I had a great time, and I always do. That's one of my favorite events every year. And I usually have to wear glasses to read stuff, but I have no problem reading that number. So if we could, I'd actually take a minute, and maybe we can muster down in front of the dais and get a picture. Is that okay? And then take a moment to grab some of Mrs.'s cookies.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Councilmember Winger or Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
None here.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Marian.
None here.
Thank you. Next up, we have still on unscheduled public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to address the council this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda?
I am.
Ms. Nelson?
Well, a couple of things. Is this mic on?
It's green.
Yeah, green ring around it. Yep. With the Kenai Heart Center, as you know, this month, we, today, the show was available to the public. Tomorrow is the, tomorrow evening is the opening for the show for the public in the evening, 5 to 7 o'clock. Refreshments, music for my grandson, and this great show. This is an open show. It's all watercolor. There's 50 entries, which is a lot of entries for an open show, and much less for watercolor. So there's, there's, there's not any pieces that are huge. There are some that are, you know, in the 18 to 20 inch range. But it is a really quality, it's a very quality show as well. As one of the local residents, Jan Wallace, and I'm sure a lot of you know, she gathered, put the word out to the quilt group that she's a part of, and said, how about if we do a quilting square exhibit in the back room, the newly cleaned up back room that we put so much time and money into and you all helped with. And so that is really great. This is the first time that it's had its own show along with the gallery show. Yes, we had the student show in there, and we've had other things back there, but this is, this is kind of what we were aiming for, you know, to have the second, secondary second show in the back room, and it happened, and it was, it's very effective. It's a small show, but it's kind of what we wanted. It's an opportunity for another media to be shown, another group of people to be involved, so forth and so on. So it's a very interesting gallery of shows, front to back, in the building. The 5, 6, 7 again tomorrow night, and obviously, you're all welcome, and hope you can come and see that this is not a judged show. It's just an open show, and I use the word just with respect, and an excellent show. There's a lot of high-quality watercolors in there. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Nelson? Councilmember Sonar?
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know tonight what's going on in this month. I appreciate that. So you mentioned that there are 50 pieces, and I was just wondering, is there 50 artists behind those 50 pieces, or?
No, they're, they could put in a couple of pieces each if they want to. That's, most people have two pieces. Certainly, there's some that are just, just have one. So it represents quite a few people.
So approximately 25 people to 30 people probably involved?
Probably 30-ish.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, Ms. Nelson? Councilmember Winger or Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
None here.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Marian.
None here.
Thank you. Next up, we have still on unscheduled public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to address the council this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Anybody online, Ms. Sanner? Nobody online? Seeing no one to appear, we will close unscheduled public comments and go to public hearings. First up, we have ordinance number 3284-2022, accepting and appropriating private donations to the Kenai Animal Shelter for the care of animals. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3284-2022.
Second?
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3284-2022? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? I think I could probably just speak for the entire body, when I'd like to just express our gratitude for the monetary donations. Looks like we have individual donors, or Sharon Glenn Lockwood, James Spalding, Shan Tantila, Gerald Johansson, Barbara Dilly, a pet finder donation, and an anonymous donation. So thank you for those folks to donate to our, our animal control shelter. Any further comments, deliberation? Seeing none, clerk, please call it all.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Councilmember Basden?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance 3284-2022 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we're on item D2, ordinance number 3285-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund, police department, and accepting a grant from the Alaska High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for drug investigation overtime expenditures. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3285-2022.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3285-2022? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments from council? Deliberation? Seeing, hearing, Councilmember Petty?
Yes, I'd just like to commend Chief Ross for going out and finding this grant and having these resources available for our community, so that it keeps our property taxes down, and the resources don't have to come from our general fund. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call it all.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Councilmember Basden?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance 3285-2022 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we're on item D3, Resolution Number 2022-27, approving the execution of a lease of airport reserve lands using the standard lease form between the city of Kenai and Joel Caldwell on Lot 3, Block 4, FBO, general aviation apron. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3284-2022.
Second?
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3284-2022? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3285-2022.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3285-2022? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Yes, I'd just like to commend Chief Ross for going out and finding this grant and having these resources available for our community, so that it keeps our property taxes down, and the resources don't have to come from our general fund. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call it all.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Councilmember Basden?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance 3284-2022 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we're on item D2, ordinance number 3285-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund, police department, and accepting a grant from the Alaska High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for drug investigation overtime expenditures. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3285-2022.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3285-2022? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxte?
Yes, I'd just like to commend Chief Ross for going out and finding this grant and having these resources available for our community, so that it keeps our property taxes down, and the resources don't have to come from our general fund. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call it all.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Councilmember Basden?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance 3285-2022 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we're on item D2, ordinance number 3285-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund, police department, and accepting a grant from the Alaska High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for drug investigation overtime expenditures. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3285-2022.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxte?
Yes, I'd just like to commend Chief Ross for going out and finding this grant and having these resources available for our community, so that it keeps our property taxes down, and the resources don't have to come from our general fund. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call it all.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Councilmember Basden?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance 3285-2022 is enacted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on item D3, Resolution Number 2022-27, approving the execution of a lease of airport reserve lands using the standard lease form between the city of Kenai and Joel Caldwell on Lot 3, Block 4, FBO, general aviation apron. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxte?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-27? Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxte?
Thank you, Mayor. This particular parcel has a, has a kind of an old, almost dilapidated hanger on it. It's made of two-by-fours and, and sand, kind of a sand lot there. Matter of fact, it's called the Sand Lot. But I, I'm really happy that Mr. Caldwell is planning on putting $100,000 of improvements onto that, and I'm sure it'll improve the, the surface and the building itself, and I'm fully in support of this. Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Further deliberation, comments? Seeing, hearing
... o'clock, refreshments, music for my grandson. And this great show, this is an open show, it's all watercolor, there's 50 entries, which is a lot of entries for an open show and much less for watercolor. So there's, there's, there's not any pieces that are huge. There are some that are, you know, in the 18 to 20 inch range. But it is a really quality, it's a very quality show as well as one of the local residents, Jan Wallace, and I'm sure a lot of you know, she gathered, put the word out to the quilt group that she's a part of, and said, how about if we do a quilting square exhibit in the back room, the newly cleaned up back room that we put so much time and money into and you all helped with. And so that is really great. This is the first time that it's had its own show along with the gallery show. Yes, we had the student show in there and we've had other things back there, but this is, this is kind of what we were aiming for, you know, to have the second, secondary, second show in the back room. And it happened, and it was, it's very effective. It's a small show, but it's kind of what we wanted. It's an opportunity for another media to be shown, another group of people to be involved, so forth and so on. So it's a very interesting gallery of shows, front to back in the building. The five, six, seven again tomorrow night, and obviously you're all welcome, and hope you can come and see that this is not a judged show, it's just an open show, and I use the word just with respect, and an excellent show. There's a lot of high-quality watercolors in there. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions on Ms. Nelson? Councilmember Sonar?
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know tonight what's going on in this month. I appreciate that. So you mentioned that there are 50 pieces, and I was just wondering, is are there 50 artists behind those 50 pieces?
No, there's, they could put in a couple of pieces each if they want to. That's, most people have two pieces. Certainly, there's some that are just, just have one. So it represents quite a few people.
So approximately 25 people to 30 people probably involved?
Probably 30-ish.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on Ms. Nelson? Councilmember Winger or Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
None here.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Marion.
None here.
Thank you. Next up, we have still on unscheduled public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Anybody online, Ms. Sainer? Nobody online? Seeing no one to appear, we will close unscheduled public comments and go to public hearings. First up, we have ordinance number 3284-2022, accepting and appropriating private donations to the Kenai Animal Shelter for the care of animals. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3284-2022.
A second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number Seeing no one, bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? I think I could probably just speak for the entire body when I'd like to just express our gratitude for the monetary donations. Looks like we have individual donors, or Sarah and Glenn Lockwood, James Spalding, Shan Tantila, Gerald Johansson, Barbara Dilly, a Pat Finder donation, and an anonymous donation. So thank you for those folks to donate to our, our animal control shelter. Any further comments, deliberation? Seeing none, clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
Yes.
Councilmember Bayston?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance 3284-2022 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we're on item D2, ordinance number 3285-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the General Fund Police Department and accepting a grant from the Alaska High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for drug investigation overtime expenditures. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3285-2022.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments from council, deliberation? Seeing, hearing, uh, Councilmember Petty?
Yes, I'd just like to commend Chief Ross for going out and finding this grant and having these resources available for our community so that it keeps our property taxes down and the resources don't have to come from our general fund. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
Yes.
Councilmember Bayston?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance 3285-2022 is enacted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on item D3, resolution number 2022-27, approving the execution of a lease of airport reserve lands using the standard lease form between the City of Kenai and Joel Caldwell on Lot 3, Block 4, FBO, general aviation apron. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt resolution 2022-27.
I second it.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to resolution number Seeing and hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. This particular parcel has a, has a kind of an old, almost dilapidated hanger on it. It's made of two-by-fours and, and sand, kind of a sand lot there. Matter of fact, it's called the Sand Lot. But I, I'm really happy that Mr. Caldwell is planning on putting $100,000 of improvements onto that, and I'm sure it'll improve the, the surface and the building itself. And I'm fully in support of this.
Thank you.
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you very much. Further deliberation, comments? Seeing, hearing none. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none. Resolution number 2022-27 is adopted. Next item D4, resolution number 2022-28, authorizing an agreement for professional engineering services for the roadway capital improvement projects. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution 2022-28.
Second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to resolution number Seeing, hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Ms. Rose, Senator, could you give us just a quick overview of this? I think it is, some, I think this is of interest to folks in our community and would like to get a better handle on what we're doing here.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So this is a resolution that authorizes an agreement with Nelson Engineering for the design of four different projects. Those projects would be Wildwood Drive, North Willow Street, First Avenue, and also a kind of a catch-all that's called miscellaneous sinkhole repairs. These are all funds that were appropriated by council over the last several years, and we combined all of these to, into one so that we can get them all done timely. And then you, we will note that because we are going to be entering the design contract here in May, that this design won't be done until later in the summer. So the only work in here that's contemplated for completion this year would be Wildwood Drive. The others, First Street, or excuse me, First Avenue, North Willow Street, and the sinkhole repairs will either all be, be completely done next year or just a portion this year, but completion will not be till next year. But Wildwood is at our intent at this point to get that completed still this year.
Thank you, Ms. Rose, Senator. Any comments, deliberations from, for resolution number 2022-28?
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing, hearing none. Resolution number 2022-28 is adopted. Next up, we have item E3, minutes, special meeting of April 26, 2022. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Petty?
Yes, I would move to amend the April 26, 2022 special meeting minutes to-
Ms. Petty, I think we need to approve that first so we can approve the minutes and then make the motion to amend from there, so.
I would like to make a motion to approve the, the amendment for the minutes on April the 26, 2022.
Second.
Okay. So, yeah, and just to be clear, this is just a, an approval of the minutes as they were submitted. There's been no amendment yet.
Okay. I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon.
Okay. Is, is that your intent to, okay, very good. Concurrent to the second? Councilmember Naxted. Okay, very good. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes?
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection?
I do believe that Councilmember Petty has a proposed amendment. So the motion on the floor right now is just to approve the minutes as they were submitted. If there are any changes-
As a second, okay, very good. Now we'll get to the amendment, that, Ms., okay. Councilmember Petty?
Yes, I'd like to amend the minutes of April the 26th of 2022. And I would move to amend them, the special meeting minutes, to include a clerk's note clarifying that Councilmember Winger left the executive session at approximately 5:15 PM and was absent from the remainder of the executive session and the special meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Councilmember Petty, your light's on.
I would like this amendment to be read so that, to be added so that there was clarity of, of the, of who was present during the executive session and who stayed through the special meeting. And this is a standard operating procedure, and I just wanted that to be included in the minutes of that meeting on April the 26th.
Very good. Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? Councilmember Naxted?
Just, just for the clerk, just the times. I mean, the, the motion is, is correct. I just wanted to make sure that, are you aware of the times? Are they correct?
Ms. Sainer?
The exact time is not, but it was, the approximate time as noted at 5:15 is close.
Any further discussion on the proposed amendments to amend the minutes of a special meeting of April 26, 2022? Seeing none, clerk, please call roll.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
Yes.
Councilmember Bayston?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. That proposed amendment is approved.
Thank you. Next up, we have, I'd like a, a, a motion to approve the, to the special meeting minutes of 2000, or of April 26, 2022 as amended. Councilmember Petty?
I would like to request unanimous consent.
Well, we need to make the motion to just approve as amended?
I would like to approve as amended and request unanimous consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, the, the special meeting, the, the minutes of special meeting of April 26, 2022 is, is approved as amended. That brings us to item G6, ordinance number 3287-2022, conditionally donating certain city-owned property described as tract A, Parkview Subdivision, Kenai Peninsula Borough Parcel Number 047010118, to the Boys and Girls Club of the Kenai Peninsula for Developmental Facilities for Youth Sports, Recreation, Education, After School Care, and Other Youth Facilities. So this would be a motion to introduce. Councilmember Bayston?
I move to introduce ordinance 3287-2022 and refer the ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their recommendation and schedule a public hearing before City Council for May 18, 2022.
I'll second that.
Is there a second? Is there any, any discussion on the motion for introduction and referral to the planning and zoning? Do we have to move to public?
I'm sorry?
We don't, we don't need, yeah, no public hearing, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Any discussion on the motion to introduce ordinance number 3287-2022 and refer to planning and zoning? Councilmember Naxted?
Just, just to clarity, since I don't have in front of me, the, the date for planning and zoning is when? Is before our next meeting?
It should be next Wednesday.
That is, that is correct. It's next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, or-
Can we ask for unanimous?
Yes.
Ask for unanimous?
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, the motion is approved to introduce ordinance number 3287-2022 and refer to their planning and zoning meeting for a week from today. That brings us to item G8, action approval, special use permit to Weaver Brothers Incorporated for truck-trailer Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the special use permit to Weaver Brothers, Inc. for truck-trailer storage. Second.
Is there any discussion regarding the motion for approval of the special use permit?
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none. The special use permit to Weaver Brothers, Inc. for truck-trailer storage is approved. Next, we have item G9, action approval, amending the special use permit to State of Alaska Department of Natural Resources Division of Forestry for aeronautical and/or aviation-related activities. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
I move to approve the amended special use permit to the State of Alaska DNR Forestry.
I'll second that.
Any discussion from council regarding the proposed approval, motion to approve? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you. For the city manager, and I probably should have asked, for the forestry to be eligible for signatory rates, could you define what that means?
Ms. Rose, Senator?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Naxted. So as a lessee on the airport, you are eligible for signatory rates. There's, there's other things that can qualify you for signatory rates as well. Mr. Eubank might be, might have some additional information on that. But essentially, a signatory rate gives you a reduced rate compared to non-signatory. So if you're, if you're not a lessee on the airport, you pay non-signatory. As a lessee, you pay signatory. And Mr. Eubank might be able to expand on what qualifies for signatory rate if he happens to know that.
Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Naxted. Things such as landing fees and, you know, inside the terminal itself, there's different, differing rates and, and apron res, rental rates and things like that that do apply for different signatory rates and
Any further discussion?
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing, hearing none. The motion to amend the special use permit to State of Alaska Department of Natural Resources Division of Forestry for aeronautical and/or aviation-related services is approved. Next up, we have item G10, discussion, public meetings and video conferencing. Councilmember Petty?
Yes, I would like to have a discussion on this item. I know that we have come out of the pandemic and the COVID confinement, and the Zoom was a tool that was available for the safety of the public. And one of my concerns is that utilizing, we have, before the COVID began, we had opportunity for our council meeting to be utilized and seen by the public through YouTube. And if anyone wished to participate, then they would have to show up here at the council chambers. And I, I would like to, but when COVID came along, we offered the opportunity for participation for safety concerns for the public through Zoom. And now that those safety concerns have been mitigated, I would like to discontinue our forum for the public on Zoom. My reasoning is, is that my concern is that people from all reaches of the world could come and make comments and create drama in our small town here. And, and if it was important enough for them to participate, then they would need to make the effort to show up here publicly. And so if we continue to offer the Zoom publicly, I think we set ourselves up potentially for antagonistic possible groups to come in and wreak havoc in our city. So we do have our opportunity for the public and anyone in the world to observe and see our public particip, our public view of, of our council meeting. And so I would like to submit that we discontinue the Zoom opportunity for the public. And that's my thought process and rationale. And I would like to hear other comments from the council so that I could move forward with an action item in the future. To address this.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No worries.
Okay. Mr. Bloom, would this require, is there, would this resolution or ordinance to accomplish what, just as, just as a question of process?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I'm not sure I understood the question. So right now, we're just having discussions, so no action would be taken at this meeting. If council wanted action to be taken, we could put it on as an action item at the next meeting.
I guess, okay, maybe to clarify the question, in order to accomplish what Ms., Councilmember Petty has talked about, would that require a code change or an amendment to the code or?
I don't believe it would require a code change. We amended our code to make it more ambiguous as to how council members and certain commission and committee members are able to participate. But I don't think there's anything in our code with regard to Zoom. Shelley might know more, but I don't think there is.
Thank you, through the mayor. There is no specific code about participants from the, the constituents coming through Zoom. It's related to council members and commission members.
That's, that's, thank you. That's what I thought. Want clarification on that. Councilmember Bayston?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my thoughts out, out loud is I don't disagree that I'd like to see this get back to normal. But I, I don't know if this is not normal now, I guess, for some folks. So if we did this, like tonight, we've got, we've got a couple council members that couldn't be here, we'd still have it available for them to be able to log on. Is, and this is for the clerk, is the YouTube that's being broadcast, is it being broadcast live or is it recorded and then put out there?
It's currently broadcasting live, and then after the meeting, I think it takes like 30 minutes for the video, recorded video to show back up.
Thank you. And I guess my question to the city manager is, what is the annual cost to, to maintain the zone?
Ms. Rose, Senator?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Bayston, that's actually another good question for the clerk, because she's got those numbers.
Ms. Sainer?
Actually, I will apologize that I am not prepared, and I might ask the finance director if he remembers what I submitted for the budget. No, I, I do not know that right off the top of my head. I apologize.
Well, to, I guess to continue on that is, we'd have to continue it probably, besides using it for this forum, is, is the city employees using it for anything else now? Or is that still something that's out there?
Ms. Rose, Senator?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Bayston, we are still utilizing it. I believe we have 10 licenses, or we're proposing to have 10 licenses for the upcoming budget year. See, with that in mind, my, my guess is, and, and we can confirm this though, but I don't think that there's any sort of financial impact regardless of if this policy changes or not, because I don't think it's going to require an additional license to allow the public. So there's not going to be a financial impact either way. If we continue to allow the public to participate or not, there won't be an additional cost to the city.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that was sort of my question to, to legal or, or Ms. Sainer was that if this is, we're still, you know, I know we codified the ability of council members to participate via Zoom, which sort of keeps that in place. So there wasn't an attempt to change that, if I'm hearing that. I see Ms. Petty shaking her head. So the idea would be that it would just sort of take out the component of the public being able to testify remotely. So, you know, the, the cost we would still maintain for the system we have in place, as I understand it, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Any further discussion on this?
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes, Vice Mayor Glenn Denny, go ahead.
Yeah, ju, just a comment. At, at one time, this Zoom feature was going to sunset. And it was last year, we took an action to continue or prolong the Zoom features in our, in our council meetings to include the public. And it might, well, if we're going to have further discussion on this, it might go, be good to go back and just reflect on the notes and discussion that happened during that discussion, the previous discussion, and, and see what the rationale was then to, to continue to include the, the public in Zoom meetings. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. My, my recollection is, is similar or same as Mr. Glenn Danning's, that what we're using here is, it was, it was a little bit higher level of, of service. It wasn't the $125 one that I bought, you know, for the year or something like that. But I don't remember how much more it was, not to counter dick, but I, I was thinking that it was something different, and, and Mr. Glenn Danning concurred with what I, what I was thinking. But I, I guess, one way or the other, I mean, I prefer to have, it's always more powerful when the public is here speaking to us, and we can, we can have that kind of discussion as opposed to, to the Zoom. And it's, it's preferred by me. It would be preferred if I was going to give testimony to a body to actually be there. It, so I would like to see it weaned off. I'm not sure if it's something we would do all of a sudden or not, but anyway, that's further discussion, I guess.
Councilmember Sonar?
Mayor Gabriel?
Oh. Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Winger, and then I'll come back to, to, all right. Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I'm not in support of that change at this time. I have concern when, being that I'm on the planning and zoning liaison, we have many applicants that have been showing up via Zoom to do their application and hearing process. So I have a little concern that they wouldn't have access as constituents, because they don't fall in the same category as commissioners or council. And if this isn't really a cost-saving thing, we're just worrying about a situation that we actually haven't had a situation like that. It's still a preemptive worry when we haven't experienced that with this platform. As much as I dislike Zoom myself, I prefer to be in person. There is always a situation where this comes in handy, and when an applicant is in another state and they're trying to get their conditional use permit heard, it is kind of nice to be able to see the person face-to-face and get their testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonar?
So I'm assuming now that the, the public link, for, for the Zoom link, for them to participate in any type of meeting would be on the city website? Is that correct? I mean, where, where do they get the link?
Well, I, I think what the, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm reading here is that they would still be able to view our meeting as, just like we're doing right now. They just wouldn't be able to, to, to call in or testify or do an audio, be a participant. Is that correct, Councilmember Petty?
Yes, that's- Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I understand that. My question is, what's been done recently through COVID, where do our constituents find their link to participate in the Zoom? Is it on the city website?
Sainer?
Thank you, through the mayor. We generate a new access code for every meeting and publish it on the agendas. On each individual agenda, so if you're interested in a meeting, the link and the information to join is at the bottom of that agenda.
And it's just out there in the open for anyone to get then?
Yes, we publish it on our website.
So my thought is, instead of just pulling it away totally, what if we just added another step so that those parties interested, I mean, so that it would encourage people to come in person? But if there was a true emergency and somebody, you know, was planning to talk and present to us, but all of a sudden they have to fly out of state for an emergency, but they need that Zoom link to be able to talk to us and not just watch on YouTube, but to be able to participate, is it possible that they could call the clerk, they could call you, call the office and get? I don't, that puts a lot of burden on you, but I'm just wondering if there's some way we could incorporate one more step so that the people who really need it could get it? And it just wouldn't be out there in the open for everybody? Just something to think about.
Councilmember Naxted?
Thanks. I don't know if we have a policy. Somebody, we were talking code, but it seems like we might have had a policy, at least for council use and all of that. And perhaps it would be the creation of a policy, if we don't have one, or a modification one, that might, you know, address some of Councilmember Wingers and Sonar's. You know, where, where there's an applicant, they're, they're kind of not exactly the public. You know, they, they're, they're interacting in that way if they need to, need to zoom in, you know. But, or if there's an emergency and they state it, you know. Something like that is a possibility. But perhaps some sort of a, of a policy that we could get established.
I have a question to Councilmember Petty. So in the laydown, there was this Zoom analytics. Is there, is there anything we can glean from that? I did briefly glance at it, but I wasn't quite sure what, what.
That was just to, that was just to let you know the participation that has been occurring and it's diminishing through the public. And I just wanted y'all to have that information. Two of those participations are, the second, the second column there subtracts the clerk's call-in. And there's, there's two phone lines that the clerk has to use. So it, you would need to subtract those two to get the true numbers. So that's why there's those two columns there.
Thank you. Councilmember Winger, I see you got your hand up.
I, I got your attention. Thank you.
Okay, oh, oh, there we go, okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice, Vice Mayor Glendinning?
Yeah, just to chime in on the planning and zoning aspect of this. When it comes to getting approval for a conditional use permit, there's a strongly worded request that the petitioner do, does participate in the discussion. And usually that is after the, the staff revelations of how this particular conditional use permit fits in with, with current city code and then applications of, of the, the, excuse me. Got it, I throw it here. So what I'm, what I'm saying is that sometimes we have, we have to have testimony from, from people that, that are not, not just commenting on a, on a meeting. And I take, I take the clerk's suggestion very, very well. I think it's something we can do, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I, I haven't really given it a lot of thought about how, I, I know that, you know, my experience is, like you said, even, even recently, you know, we don't have a lot of participation via Zoom. I see we got people that, you know, are watching the meeting. That it's going along, a lot, going on, a lot of times they don't participate. Sometimes they do. I, I don't know where I'm at on that exactly. I guess my, my inclination, Councilmember Petty, would be to maybe see about fleshing out a, a policy as, as Councilmember Naxted suggested. And maybe bringing it, bringing it toward, forward to the body because it doesn't sound like it is necessarily anything that would require a code change, although I'm sure Legal would check into that, of whether you would grant a, a limited participation by people that request it. You know, like if they were going to request, maybe there's, and, and some of my concern is maybe based around elderly people that maybe, or, you know, don't have the ability to, to come down here. And I don't want to have to shut them out of the process if they would feel like they wanted to, to testify or participate. So, but I, I do see your concern, I guess, at some level. So I guess that would be my suggestion. That's, I'm just one here. I, I'll, and that's my comment. So if there's any other comments, I guess, let us know. Councilmember Petty?
So if, if the clerk could be so kind to find out if we did have a sunset date, like Mr. Glendinning was saying, and seeing what that date is, I was just, I never ever want to disallow any type of public participation at all, at all. I'm just thinking of, of individuals who might have egregious or malicious intent towards the city, who don't even live in the city, who are out of state, who through Zoom could participate with ill intent for the city. And that was my concern.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion? So I guess in, in relation to why you brought this forward, do you feel you have enough, you know, sort of information from the body or reading the tea leaves to have a sense of direction, Councilmember Petty?
Yes, thank you. I graciously appreciate everyone's comments and discussion in regards to this. And I'm only working for the very best for our community and our city.
Very good, thank you. Seeing no other discussion on item G10, we'll move to item G11. Disposal options for Track A Park View Subdivision, Kenai Peninsula, borough parcel number 047010118. This was a discussion item. And there, we're going to keep the discussion to this item pretty narrow. It does reference a, it's in relation to an ordinance that we got, that we, that we had introduced tonight and moved to planning and zoning ordinance number 3287. So I guess I would just ask administration to give a, just a little overview here of, or Councilmember Bason, either, either one. Councilmember Bason, that's fine.
I can start off and then we can ask the city manager to fill in if that's okay, Mayor. So the memo that you have in front of you, we've had, of course, this, this body's had conversations on the piece of property that we're going to have up for introduction at the next, at the next meeting after it goes through planning and zoning. And that's dealing with Track A, whether we, whether we donate to the Boys and Girls Club. And one of the conversations that we have is, is that piece of property being a viewed piece of property and where it sits at. And we think we may have an opportunity to where if we would, if this body would, would, would give the city manager the go-ahead, he could, he could probably reach out to the Boys and Girls Club. And there is a developer that, that's also interested. And we may be able to look at trying to subdivide this property to where the view portion of it could still be used for its, for its value. And of course, that would still have to go out to bid if we ended up subdividing it. And also, there's a little chunk of land close to the baseball side of the, of the property with the Boys and Girls Club. So we're trying to, trying to, to make this work out to where we can maybe maximize the value of the property as well as support the Boys and Girls Club. And what we're looking for is, is this body just kind of giving the city, city manager a go-ahead to have those discussions. Did I, did I lay that up all right, Mayor?
Yeah, I believe so. Does council understand where we're going here? It was just, the, the, the discussion will be limited to whether we give direction to the city manager to pursue the, the scenario outlined by Councilmember Bason. So, and we can simply, you know, do a sort of nodding of heads or, you know, sort of a majority. Councilmember Naxted?
Well, I was going to say that I, I agree with that, that scenario. I mean, it's a win-win situation. And I also like to say that, you know, I, I think that that's something the city manager, I appreciate you coming to us and asking in one respect, Paul. But on the other hand, you know, it's, it's things like this too, that, you know, during your daily work, you know, I would expect you to probably kind of, kind of maybe be working some of these things out when they become, you know, not waiting for a council meeting and then bringing them forth if we have to go into executive session or, or something discussed. Because there'll be opportunities lost by waiting two weeks. Actually, it turns into more than that. So, but that aside, I'm nodding yes.
Very good. Councilmember Petty?
I agree with both councilmember Bason and Naxted in giving the go-ahead for the city manager to do negotiations so that we could have a win-win for all parties concerned, plus a win for the city. those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
And Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Glendinning?
Yeah, to use a southern phrase, I think we're trying to get all the dogs barking here and I do agree with that. Just as, as part of the, the outline that councilman Bason raised. Did I hear correctly that there's a possibility that this property would be open, offered to the public as a, as a means of selling and gaining revenue for the city? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, I, I think the more discussion, the, the better, Mayor. And I was prepared to, at length, go through quite a bit of this. But the more information I have, the better, the better I will know. And just in conclusion, I would think that, again, if we could provide the maps and the overlays of the, of the properties, the outlines of the buildings and the, and the baseball fields we want to take, I think, I think that would be helpful in our discussion.
Very good. And, and just, just for everybody's information, this is germane to our ordinance that we, that we've referred to planning and zoning. But this, this doesn't, wouldn't give the council, the, the city manager, you wouldn't necessarily be negotiating with a singular developer. It's to allow for that property to be utilized for possible development. So I just want to, just wanted to make that distinction here. So is everybody good?
Yeah, just thank you, Mayor. I think you're commenting on what I said. I just, I totally agree that a broader discussion is in order here and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Glendinning. So I, I'm seeing some consensus here with the request for the city manager to pursue as laid out by Councilmember Bason. Paul, does that give you enough information to go forward? Okay, very good. Any further discussion on that discussion item? Seeing none, we'll move to item G12, which is a discussion scheduling a Board of Adjustment Appeal Hearing. Mr. Bloom, can you tell us what we're, what we should not be participating as ex parte on?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. One, one second here. I just want to see if I can get the. Yes, so I'll let the clerk talk about this more as far as scheduling, but just as far as the Board of, the council sitting as the Board of Adjustment. So in this case, it's an appeal from the Planning and Zoning Commission for a conditional use permit. And the council for the new members that haven't done this before will essentially be sitting as a judge, although not individually, you each will get one vote on this conditional use permit. And it's important that you make your decision based on the facts and evidence presented to you during the hearing, not outside of the hearing. So it's important not to have discussions with any of the parties or neighbors that live around the area that might be planning to come and testify, or even if they're not planning on coming to testify. Also, it's important not to do your own individual investigations on this property. You can certainly use your common knowledge as members of the community, if you're generally familiar with the area. But it's, we don't want council members going to the property and, you know, outside of the hearing or that sort of thing. If, if there ever was a need to see a piece of property, we can arrange that, but we would do it as part of a public hearing. So just ask that if somebody comes up to you in the grocery store and says, hey, I know this is going to be coming up before you and here's my thoughts on it, just tell them that you, you know, you can't talk about it right now, but they're welcome to come to the hearing and, and talk about it then.
I do have a quick question for clarification, Mr. Bloom. In the subject line of this, there's a, it's a, an appeal to Planning and Zoning Commission in action denying conditional use permits to the applicant for cabin rental and guide service. Those are two separate hearings or those combined into one?
I'm not sure, sorry. Mayor Gabriel, I'm not sure exactly how we're going to run the hearing. It's, it's a little bit complicated. We don't want to, a lot of the testimony will be the same for both conditional use permits. The clerk and I will, with, you know, the mayor and council, try and make it as smooth and non-repetitious, repetitious as possible. But also, they are two separate permits. One could be denied, one could be approved, vice versa. So we're, we're going to do it all in one night and try and minimize any unnecessary repetition.
Very good. That was going to be my follow-up is, that's kind of where I was going with it, if we can do it all in one night. So Ms. Sainer, scheduling?
Thank you, through the mayor. So our code requires that we set a date within 45 days. However, upon certain conditions, we can go out to 60. So the 45-day deadline from getting this from today is Saturday, June 8th. And the 60 day is July 3rd. And if you'll note in the memo, I noted the council meeting dates that we have out there. And they're, so also another note that to consider is I will be at Continuing Education, May 20th through the 30th. So I will not be available that entire week when we look at dates to schedule these.
Just for everybody else, I'll be gone. I know we've got Labor Day weekend in there, which is the 27th through the 29th. I'll be out of state that, that weekend. It sounds like the first week of June, we got a council meeting June 1st. June 3rd is employee appreciation, I believe, Ms. Rose Center. So I'm going to throw out a couple out there just to get the ball rolling here. How about Tuesday, May 31st?
I'd be available for that.
That works for me, Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you.
Same here, Mayor.
Okay, all right, May 31st. A start time? 5:00 PM? 5:00 PM? I'm seeing, nodding your head. And I'm sorry, Councilmember Sonar, were you good with that date too? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, wow, that was, that was a shot. That's like getting Wordle the second try. All right, next up, we have Committee, Commission, Commission Committee Reports, Council on Aging.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. No report. Next meeting is May 12th.
Thank you, Airport Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. No report to give. The next meeting is May 12th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Harbor Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. There is no report and our next meeting is May the 10th. May, I beg your pardon? May the 9th, right here.
Thank you, Parks and Recreation Commission. Was that Vice Mayor Glendanny?
I thought I requested, asked Councilor Sonar to cover that for me. I wasn't...
Oh, do you have... Councilmember Sonar?
That's tomorrow.
Yes, that is tomorrow.
Okay, very good. So, your port, report is the meeting's tomorrow?
Meeting is tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonar. Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. On April 27th, the Planning and Zoning Commission met in regular session in the council chambers. There was a public hearing for a resolution, an application for a conditional use permit for cabin rentals for the property described as Block 11, Block 1, Central Height subdivision, located on Portlock Street in Kenai. The application was submitted by Richard Main. We had a very, very complete discussion and a active, respectful, you know, how can I say, conversation and comments, both from the applicants and from the members of the audience. There were some amendments. Was asked that a landscape plan be developed for the privacy fence? Can you hear me? Hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, got the privacy fence. And then they wanted a representative to meet and enroll the guest at the location, since it is in the residential area. And perhaps even a video confirmation of a check-in, that that also was an amendment that was passed. And then a unanimous amendment was passed, posting the House rules at the, at the facility, stating the rules of conduct, noise, when the coming's and going can be in all of this. In other words, it was to show respect for the neighborhood. The works, there's a work session for conditional use permit improvement on the 11th of May at 5:30. And this work session may need more time, but they'll take their first bite of the apple on that day, and they are looking for community input. And they also talked about the waterfront project review, which happened on the 2nd and 3rd. Next meeting is the May 11th, and that ends the, ends the report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Glendanny. Beautification Committee?
No report. Our next meeting is May 10th. It's a field trip meeting.
Oh, very good. That's coming up. Did you say May 10th?
Yes, May 10th.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Sonar, under item H-7, mini-grants staring, there is no report. Unreported, the mayor, I got a few things here. First of all, I want to thank the senior connection of the group for presenting that, presenting here this evening. It's always, it's always a good time to see them here and make it over, especially now that, you know, things seem to be opening up a lot more. Obviously, the evening there was, was fantastic and good to see them. And of course, Mrs.'s cookies are always a hit. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to try those. Last Friday, I did attend the Kenai Aviation open house for their new airplane. So, they had that pulled out, out on the ramp there, and everybody got to go take a tour. Understood there was a short flight that I somehow missed out on. I don't know why. Did you get on?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Me too.
Must've left early, because I was in the plane, and we were trying to get the pilot to take up, take off, and, all right, now I'm really jealous, so I don't know what happened there. But anyway, beautiful plane, and really excited to see them expanding at the airport, and wish them the best of luck moving forward. They've got big plans for having their airline based out of Kenai, and, and hopefully, we'll see that succeed. Yesterday evening, I did attend the Riverfront Revitalization Visioning Session, which, there was a Monday session, which I was, was not able to make. But they, they sort of grabbed all the information, and they had three, and Paul will probably be speaking into it. But it's kind of neat the way they fleshed out, you know, three concepts, and then had everybody, you know, sort of mark down what they did and didn't like about each concept, and then vote for their favorite. But I was telling Mr. Ostrander at the end of that, you know, you really get an idea of, of, you know, what, what you're paying for and what they're, what they're being, what they're able to distill down through community efforts pretty quick. And it was amazing to me, all the elements that they were able to incorporate from the community. And so, I think, all in all, I think we'll be, you know, pretty happy with that, with that product. Today, today at noon, Mr. Ostrander and I presented our fourth annual State of the City address to the chamber, and it went very well. It's, it's nice to, you know, report when things are going pretty decently in the city. And I would ask that, if it's no problem, Mr. Ostrander, to send out the PowerPoint to the council so that they can go through that information that we, that we presented on today. And, and, you know, again, you know, not, not too bad a shape, I would say. And, and, and it's all, you know, teamwork, administration, our department, our employees, and council, that, that's all a collaborative effort that makes that work. So, so far, so good. And with that, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out here this evening. And that ends my report. I will go to administration reports next, city manager, Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. A couple of things to report. So, we met again with the Kenai Peninsula Borough folks to discuss the Saldovia Quarry. Had another really good discussion. It looks promising. And it's, it's a big benefit for the borough if we were to produce rock out of that quarry, because they're running out of room at their landfill. It would expand their landfill space, and it would also provide them with some, some of the rock that we don't utilize for the bluff stabilization project. It allowed them to utilize that for local projects around Saldovia. So, it appears like there's benefits on both sides. I have a meeting with Mayor Pierce scheduled for tomorrow to discuss the relationship between the city and the borough, and also about the possibility of him sponsoring a resolution to support the city in its efforts. So, I'll have more to report after that meeting tomorrow. As Mayor Gabriel said, Monday and Tuesday, McKinley Consulting was in town for public visioning sessions. I attended both nights, and after two days of public input, they have clear direction from the community on a conceptual plan. So, there were three conceptual plans that they provided last night. They got a lot of comments on those. There was then the preferred plan, and they're gonna incorporate the parts of the concepts that people really liked that weren't the preferred plan into that one plan. So, it's really kind of a mash of all three. So, they will be working on that. They will be refining it. And you'll see that included in the final report that they provide to the city. Much of the last seven days, I've spent on trying to secure the $6.5 million from the state for our bluff stabilization project in the state's capital budget. Thursday of last week, Thursday morning, I received a text saying, "It looks like that funding is in jeopardy. It may not happen." And you and Mayor Gabriel may want to get on a plane, get down here. I immediately started working on it, contacted as many folks as I possibly could. Needless to say here, seven days later, things are looking much better. That our $6.5 million is now actually in the House side of the capital budget. And there's a reasonable chance that it's also gonna be on the Senate side. So, we've made huge progress. There's actually three individuals I want to make sure that I publicly, publicly, um... Acknowledge. Thank you, James. Publicly acknowledge here tonight. The first one is Representative Ben Carpenter, has been hugely supportive in this. He was the one that actually was able to get the $6.5 million included in the House side of the capital budget. The other one is Senator Murchicki. He's continuing to work to try to get those funds included on the Senate side. And the last person I'd like to thank is actually Mayor Charlie Pierce, who immediately upon finding out that that funding was in jeopardy, wrote letters of support to key legislators. And I have a sense that, that those letters were very helpful in getting this funding in the House side of the budget. I'd also like to thank one other person that is really the keeper of the capital budget on the House side, and that is Representative Kelly Merrick. She is, is really kind of the keeper of the capital budget, and she's been very supportive of this project as well. You know, there's limited capital funding this year, so getting this into the budget required significant advocacy. And it started with the mayor's and my trip to Juneau in, in, that was in February or March. Then really constant attention over this last week to try to push it. And we're gonna have to continue to advocate until the very end of the session. I actually testified in front of House Finance this afternoon just to thank Representative Merrick and Representative Carpenter for inclusion, and also to continue to, continue to tell them about how important this project is for the city of Kenai. So, again, from last Thursday to now, we've made huge progress. But we'll continue to advocate for that until the end of the session. And that's all I have tonight, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ostrander. Any questions to the city manager? Councilmember Necks then.
I want to say, holy cow, thanks for jumping in there and, and pushing that through. Because if you'd have hesitated, it wouldn't have happened. So, thank you very much for, for being an advocate for the city.
Any further questions of the city manager? Councilmember Winger or Vice Mayor Glendanny?
I don't have any at this time. Next meeting, I'll have everything all thought out, and I'll be a little more succinct. Thank you for a good meeting.
Okay, very good. With that, we'll move to the...
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Winger. Seeing no other questions, the city manager will turn to the city attorney, Ms. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, members of council. I don't have any comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, the city attorney?
I did have, I did have a question, I think, or someone, someone else asked of, when, when will we expect the ruling for the EEZ? I think they were gonna try to fast-track that, weren't they?
Yeah, it's on an expedited path forward. I, I want to say June 20th was the date that the judge kind of promised. But I would hope we get it sooner than that, because I know the commercial fishing fleet wants to gear up.
Very good. Thank you. Any further questions, the city attorney? Seeing none, we'll move to the city clerk, Ms. Sander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I have no comments tonight. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, any questions to the city clerk? Councilmember Necks then.
I just have one, and maybe it's my faulty memory, or maybe it's just another way of doing things which are, you know. But in removing an item from the consent agenda, we had two tonight. My recollection is previously, when an item was removed from the consent agenda, it was done during approval of the consent agenda or not at that point. And tonight, we did it while we were approving the, the, the meeting agenda. So, could you, could you explain that? And have we been kind of doing it maybe, or is there just two right ways, or?
Thank you, through the mayor. So, my previous experience, the agenda and the consent agenda are generally approved as one. My thought process is pulling them during setting of the agenda, because we are setting them on the actual agenda, not on the consent agenda any longer. So, either way, could work. But was we approved the agenda originally? I thought it would be better to make clear at that point that those were not on the consent.
Okay, so if we approve the, let's just say we, somebody forgets to pull it off, something off the consent agenda when we approve the agenda in the future, and that was really what we'd like to do, but they'd still have the opportunity to do it when we approve the consent agenda.
That is correct.
Yeah, good.
Okay, very good. Any other questions of the city clerk? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move it to additional public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time? Ms. Horst, on any item?
Good evening. I'm April Horst. I'm from Kenai. And I just want to make a couple of general comments. I do want to address councilmember Glenise Petty's comment about the Zoom. I personally have no use for Zoom. I don't like it for personal use. But I have seen the benefit of that for people being able to participate just by zooming in. And maybe they're not commenting on anything, but I know that people are listening, and that is very encouraging for more public participation. I do understand your concerns about rabble risers or anybody coming in and disrupting the session. But I think this is better for the public. And if we want to believe Bill Gates, he did say there's gonna be another pandemic. So, instead of taking it away and bringing it back, why don't we just keep it in? If it's not gonna be, if it's not gonna be a distraction financially, if it's not going to, we're not gonna lose anything or gain anything by removing it. I think it is a benefit, and there are a lot of people, I agree, we should show up to city council meetings. But there's more than just a couple of circumstances where people just can't be involved. And I know that when I was an active parent, I simply couldn't have made it to these meetings. There was just too much on the agenda. My children are grown now, and I have more time to be a terror at the city council meetings. Yeah, you're agreeing with that. It's true. So, I would like to see it maintained. It is a positive for the public. And it's another option for us to be able to communicate with city council members. So, I'm just putting my point of view in there for the record. The other point of view that I'm putting in for the record is that this land tract for the Boys and Girls Club, and I support supporting our Boys and Girls Club completely. But I am going to say thank you, James Councilman Bayston, about providing an alternative, because that is one sweet piece of view property. And just to give it away, it is our, our taxpayer funds that support that land. And so, just to give it away, that always bothered me. And I'd like to see it to be a taxpayer-generated, money-making proposition for the, for the city. I think there's a lot of benefit to that, and subdividing it made a lot of sense. It's kind of a win-win for both sides, and I'd be really interested to hear more about that. I do have a concern as a mom, moving the Boys and Girls Club. I know, I understand their need or their desire to do that. But the piece of property that they want to buy is off the beaten track. And this may not, may not be a big deal to other people. But for me, my first concern would be that it's a little bit more isolated, and that that road going down to the beach has a lot of traffic, transient as well as unknowns coming in throughout the summer or throughout the year. And so, what would we do as a city to plan on beefing up patrols, making sure that our most vulnerable are protected? Because we do have a huge problem on the peninsula with sex trafficking, or all over the state of Alaska. And so, having that move, that's the first thing I saw, I thought of when they talked about buying that area, because it is more secluded. And that just provides an opportunity. And I know that we're not looking at that part of it. We're looking at supporting the Boys and Girls Club. But I do look at stuff like that, especially, I always have with my children. And I think that other parents would be kind of concerned about that as well. And so, I would ask the city council to please be aware of that, and maybe in the purchasing, because the property is amazing. It's wonderful, and it would benefit the Boys and Girls Club. But I'm asking you to also put in there considerations for making sure that our most vulnerable in the area are fully protected. And if that means more patrols, if that means making sure that the Boys and Girls Club have more conditions to where they're making sure that the kids are better protected in that area, especially with the kind of population that we don't have going down, up and down from that beach area. And the fact that it is more secluded, it's off the beaten path. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Horst. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time? Ms. Nelson?
You know, sitting over there, I could hardly understand most of what she had to say, because it's right here, doesn't go out there. The microphone, the sound system doesn't carry it any further. I think my hearing is still pretty good. So, anyway, it's also true of some of you members on council. Henry always turns his head one way, so the volume goes that way. Glenise's voice is so soft, and the mic doesn't pick it up as well. It's very difficult to hear most of what she has to say usually. Anyway, you've heard me complain about that before. A couple of things that I forgot. Next month, you'll be interested in this for a variety of reasons. Thor Evenson has a show at the Art Center. He has also started to do his annual back and forth, back and forth, to deal with his, his... He has also started to do his annual back and forth, back and forth to deal with his, his fishing boat, et cetera. So while you're discussing the land that you're dealing with over on Spruce, he's going to be a little bit more accessible, and he's oftentimes not very accessible. And also, Sunday is the Potter's Guild Mother's Day sale, which is again going to take place in the main gallery at the Art Center, not in the pottery studio. As I said last month, we'll be bringing, they'll be bringing tables in and setting the pottery out. It'll be a whole lot more accessible than trying to have that sale, which is very popular in the art stu-, or the pottery studio. You know, I was listening to the assembly meeting last night, and I thought that the progress on the restoration was dead in the water in terms of money in Juneau. So I'm glad to hear that it is at least better today. I don't know that, I don't know when we're going to be able to say that it's cured, going to be fixed for sure. Any comments on that from anybody? I, you know, when I was doing milepost ad sales and going over to Seldovia every year, a couple of times a year, and coming back on, back and forth on the ferry, here are these huge trucks that you've all seen at some point, carrying these enormous boulders. I thought, what is that for? Well, now I know, and I know why. So what's the status? Where are we, where are we? What's next? What is the next thing for bank restoration? What's the next progress step there? Tell me that. Coming out of Juneau, money coming out of Juneau, is that it?
That's part of the equation, yes. But as, as Ms. Ostrander pointed out today at, at Chambers, the idea would be to have this, you know, bid-ready documents and going to bid in the spring of 2023 for, that's, that's our, that's our goal.
Yep. Sorry to miss Chamber today. I just didn't see the notice. Must be getting old.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time? Anybody on Zoom? Nobody online, or nobody on Zoom? With that, we'll move to council comments. Let's start with Vice Mayor Glendening.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, I have a suggestion. Evidently, my, my microphone and my cell phone works really well, and I'll, I'll donate it to the city, and maybe you can use the technology. But anyway, I, I'm down in northern Illinois here, a personal matter, just, we have a pretty tight high school group. And we got together, there's over 60 of us, got together and reminisced a little bit. And it was, it was, it was really good for us to, to, to see one another. It was all from the high school cohort, 60s and 70s, that type of thing. The, tonight's public discussion was, was, was very, very, very informative. And I'm sorry to have missed the waterfront development programs, but maybe I can catch up on, on information from the, from the administration. And I got the schedule down for what we're doing this month. We're busy, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Glendening. Councilor Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I just want to thank everybody for their comments. I'm in the valley for state club wrestling. Just want to wish all the peninsula wrestlers that will be traveling to this tournament good luck. We recently, from our Seldatna Whalers Wrestling Club, had some youth go to Las Vegas and compete in the All-Americans Future. And we had two kids go from our club, one placed first in nation for Greco, and fifth in eighth. So we had some local athletes go and take top place in nation, and they just got back in time for state. And then we had one of the girls from our club go down to a women's national tournament, and hopefully she too will bring back a high-ranking hardware to our local area. And we, I just want to point out, we've got some amazing athletes in all of our local sports. And, you know, we are truly blessed to be able to offer that to our local youth, and to them excel is just great. And I just want to say thank you, and I'll be back in town next week.
Thank you, Councilmember Winger. Good luck up there. Councilmember Petty?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to publicly apologize to to individuals in the audience and individuals who are on Zoom and individuals who are on YouTube for my not speaking clearly or loud enough. And I will wholeheartedly make a concerted effort to always be able to be heard. So thank you for that reminder, Ms. Orth, and dearest Marion, thank you so very much. I had the privilege to attend City Chamber today and hear the Fourth Annual State of the City of Kenai address from Mayor Gabriel and our city manager, Mr. Olstrander. And our numbers are very robust and would encourage everyone to reach out and get those slide decks, to read those results yourselves. Also, I would like to say thank you wholeheartedly to the Senior Connection and their generous $50,000 donation to the city, and also recognize Missy for her continued dedication for the excellent meal preparations that you can find over at Kenai Senior Center and the lovely cookies that they donated tonight. Want to remind everyone of the art show grand opening tomorrow with the watercolors, and it's from five to nine, five to seven. Also, there will be a cleanup of the city of Kenai that's happening on the 21st. That's a Saturday of May. That's from 10 to 12. We'll all meet out at the Green Strip. And then after we get everything spruced up here at the city, there will be a barbecue for everyone that participated and volunteered. So thank you for everyone's robust discussion and comments. Appreciate all the comments from the public so that we can better be informed and make informed decisions as we move forward to do our utmost best for the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Petty. Student Representative Thibodeau?
Hello. Thank you. Sorry. For the school, sports are doing, sports are doing well. We had a baseball game today and yesterday. I believe we're having two more this week. Our baseball students are having no break. I am proud to say that both of the games that our JV played, we have won them. So our JV is, as of right now, undefeated. In other sports, track is going well. I myself am not in track, but I have heard that we are doing well. I, in, I believe in some race, I do not quite know which one, we placed second and third for Boys and Girls respectively. In other news for the school, AP testing is currently going on. So a lot of our students are going through with that. And approximately a week ago, we underwent student council elections. So we have a new senior class president. We have new senior class electorals? Yeah, well, everybody got a new, a new spot, yeah. And tomorrow, we are having a very big day, because one, the blood drive is going on. I myself am partaking in the blood drive, so hopefully be able to give back some of my blood back to the people. And we are also having the band concert tomorrow. It's at 6:00. It is at school. I encourage everybody here to come. And lastly, in a bit kind of not serious news, but a couple of, well, like, I would say 20 students have gotten the approval of the... Sorry, my mind is blanking right now. Yeah, the mayor, but for the school. Principal, that's it. That's it.
Sounds like, starts with, oh my gosh.
They have actually gotten express permission from the principal to get a pool table for the school. Yeah. A bunch of my friends, as well as other people, have signed a petition, I suppose you would call it, for a pool table to be sort of enacted into the school. Have our own sort of recreational area. So perhaps it could be something to look forward to, and that's all I have to report on the school.
Thank you, Student Representatives Thibodeau. Councilor Sonar?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Last week, I attended the Kenai Aviation Lunch, and I'm so excited for the Caldwell family and the forward progress that their business is going. And I was one of the lucky few that hung around at the end and got to go up on the flight. It was a gorgeous day. And I have one word to describe that plane: svelte. Then Monday night and Tuesday night, I attended the waterfront workshops, and that, that was, that was good. It was productive. We got to draw and scribble on the maps and put our ideas down on paper. And then Tuesday, their architects and their engineers looked it over and, and made three final drawings, a conglomerate of what we did. And pretty much I'm repeating what has already been said, but it was, it was a good time. And I, I look forward to seeing what, what they come back with in the fall. I think they said they were going to come back in the fall and give their findings. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sonar. Councilor Bazem?
Thank you, Mayor. So our student rep left off the best sport going at the high school right now, which is soccer. The Kenai Central High School girls tied Seldatna yesterday, and the boys beat Seldatna. And they've got Ketchikan, Diamond, and Nakiski over the next three days. And the only reason I know that, because I have two kids playing soccer right now. And happy Mother's Day to everybody this Sunday. All the great mothers out there, we wouldn't be here without you. Thank you.
Yeah, literally. Councilor next then.
Thank you. I, I too, attended the waterfront revitalization meeting on, on Monday night. It didn't get to go yesterday, but enjoyed the, the activities of trying to pull these different ideas together. A lot of fun at our table and with the other groups as well. And I guess the other thing that, since I'm not going to be part of every part of it, is I got to meet the team, the engineers, architects, and whatnot, and economists, and their, another one, I guess it was a team leader. But at any rate, I was impressed by all of them and their abilities, and I feel very confident in a very good product coming out of this with that team. Something I would like to mention, at a request of a friend, is this, this weekend is the annual Sports and Rec Show. But, but during that, it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, well, it's in Seldatna, not being Kenai. But anyway, it's in Seldatna. But they're going to have a dunk tank fundraiser, and this will, this will benefit hospice of the central peninsula. But really what the request was, wasn't for a donation or anything like that, and that's what I'm not here talking about. What they're, well, kind of, what they're looking for is, is volunteers for the dunk.
I vote for the mayor.
I, I second, I second that, and, and the, and the city manager.
Request unanimous consent.
Okay, I don't see any objections. So, but, but at any rate, I, I sent a copy of the flyer to the clerk with the contact information, with the request to send it to council for anybody here, and through the city manager, you know, to, to, actually to the city as a whole. Anybody that wanted to volunteer, I understand Tony Pryor is already scheduled to probably get dunked. I guess you have to hit the, hit the deal.
Not the police chief?
Yeah, well, you know, there, there it is. I'm just, just, just putting it out. So anyway, it would be appreciated that, I think Friday is kind of all, is your little half hour, little segments. Saturday, there's a gap, and then on Sunday too. So there, there it is. Huh? Thanks, and I can hear you loud and clear. Can you hear me? All, all I have to do, if you sit in the center, I'll just talk to you, and then I won't turn left or, or right. Yeah. The, the other thing I wanted to mention is, in the, in the packet, in, under the, the city manager's report is a memo, and brought forth by Dave, Dave Ross. And we've heard, we've heard testimony about human trafficking and child abduction and, and stuff like that. And it was a, a problem here. And, and, you know, I'm one of those guys, I, I go home at night, and I'm not out after dark. If I am, it's looking at the stars in my yard. And so I don't really know what goes on. And, and I appreciate this memo that was brought forth that basically identifies the definition of what both of those things are. But, you know, furthermore, it also goes through the statistics fairly, kind of briefly there, but it really isn't an issue here, which is kind of what I, I suspected, but I didn't know. And it came from our, our police chief, and through his research and his knowledge, of course, because he is one of those people that is up after dark and out and about and things like that, and what goes on. And, and so I think it's just important, since we've heard public testimony twice and some other discussion about it, that perhaps this, well, it's not an issue in our city. And, and I believe the last time it came up, there was direction from the audience, and maybe a little bit from council toward, to our city manager to be putting posters up, you know, because of, well, human trafficking and all of this kind of stuff. And with, with this information, I would not support doing that. I think that if my wife with little children, we had little kids, was at a park, and there were posters like that up, it would, it would actually make her more fearful and leave. And I don't want to see that in our city if it's, if it's not warranted. But anyway, I do appreciate the time and effort that was put into doing this, this memo by Chief Ross. And I just wanted to emphasize it and bring it to everybody's attention that, you know, it's, it's not maybe everything that you've heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, we have no executive session and no additional pending items. Seeing no other business before this party, we are adjourned.